This meeting of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, the 25th of March, 2020 will come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Rosenbarger? Sims?
Here.
Just as a note, I think Kate is here. I saw her join the meeting and I'm not sure if she's having issues, but she may join us at some point.
That's why we're checking to make sure that everybody's mic is working. Keep going, Madam Clerk.
There's Kate right there.
We'll come back to her. Councilmember Sims?
Here.
Boland?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
And Rosenbarger? Okay.
I trust that Mr. Lucas will work with Councilmember Rosenbarger to enable her to participate in the meeting. To summarize tonight's agenda, we will be hearing reports from the mayor and city offices, in particular, an update on the city's response to the COVID-19 public health emergency. We will have legislation for first reading and resolutions that includes Ordinance 2005, an ordinance authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding waterworks revenue bonds of the city, authorizing the issuance of the city of Bloomington, Indiana waterworks revenue refunding bonds of 2020 to provide funds for such refunding and the payment of the cost thereof, and addressing other matters connected therewith. We will then go to legislation for second reading and resolutions. We will hear a motion to consider Ordinance 2005 on the same night it was introduced. We will also consider Resolution 2005, a resolution from the common council requesting the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission to make a recommendation for expenditure of food and beverage tax revenues. We'll look at council's schedule and we will adjourn. Just to set the stage here, a week, as the former Prime Minister of England Harold Wilson said, is a long time in politics. A lot has changed since the last time we met on March 4th. We are living through an event unprecedented in our lifetimes. We are all having to adjust. As you all know, the governor of the state has issued several executive orders in this time of emergency. One of them has permitted us to conduct business entirely online. Dogs are going to bark, children are going to trot in. Please bear with us as we navigate meeting in this new way. Here are some of the ground rules. We're going to ask everyone who's taking part via Zoom to wear headphones or earbuds, as I am, to, if possible, to avoid audio feedback for the cat's broadcast whenever anyone is speaking. As you can see, many members of the council are in fact wearing headphones. Members of the public on this virtual meeting will have both audio and video disabled until public comment, which will proceed as follows. Members of the public wishing to speak during public comment should click Participants at the bottom of the screen, then click Raise Hand. When a member of the public is called upon to speak, council staff will enable both audio and video during that individual's comment, then disable both when the comment is over. Council members and relevant city staff will be visible on the screen unless they turn off their own video. As president, I will chair and will call on people to speak just as at normal meetings. When someone wishes to speak, you should physically raise your hand if you're a council member and wait for the chair to acknowledge you. We will do our best to accommodate people in the order that I and other staff see them, but it's not going to be perfect. I can only see nine people on my screen. I'm going to have to scan to make sure I can see everybody. So with that, to comply with the executive orders issued by the governor, we do have to formally change our rules for meeting. We're not going to entertain motions to ensure that we are complying with executive order. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, I believe you're going to make the first motion.
Yes, thank you. I move that the council suspend its rules to conduct this meeting and future meetings electronically during the public health emergency in accordance with the governor's executive order 2004 and 2009 and any future executive orders or related guidance provided by the Public Access Counselor of the state of Indiana. As part of this motion, I also move that the council affirm the decision to conduct this meeting electronically and to suspend the state requirement of explicitly adopting a policy for electronic participation and to allow members to participate in meetings electronically pursuant to applicable state guidance and instruction.
Second. That motion needs a second. We have a second. This is a debatable and amendable motion, and it needs a two-thirds majority to pass. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, I'll entertain.
Hold a question on the motion.
Second.
We have a call in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes 9-0. The next thing that has to happen is the executive orders from the governor state that any business we conduct has to be considered essential or it's not appropriate to be taken up at this time. In performing my duty under Bloomington Municipal Code 2.04.070 to approve meeting agendas, I have determined that the items on tonight's agenda are in fact essential matters critical to the operation of city government. With that, I will now call for the next motion from Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes. As a more general measure to address the governor's executive orders 2004 and 2009 and guidance issued by the Public Access Counselor, I move that the council suspend its rules under Bloomington Municipal Code 204050, regular meetings, and Bloomington Municipal Code 204380, Order of Business at Regular Sessions, and any other rule hindering the conduct of essential business at this time of a public health emergency. In addition, the council president shall have the authority to cancel or reschedule any meetings deemed nonessential or as necessary to conduct essential business. The council may also, by majority vote, decide how to place time limits on matters or speakers before the council, including delegating such authority to the presiding officer. Such suspension of the rules shall last until the expiration of the governor's executive order 2004 and 2009.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This also is debatable and amendable and needs a two-thirds majority to pass. Are there any questions about the motion? Does everyone understand fully what this means? If so, I'll entertain a motion for a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Boland?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That motion passed 9-0. With that, we now go to a report from the mayor and city offices. Who will begin? Will it be Mayor Hamilton?
Yes.
Or staff? Mayor Hamilton, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me all right? Is that okay?
You've got me loud and clear.
All right. I sincerely appreciate the chance to be with you all virtually, and I appreciate everybody who's weighing in, watching cats, other ways, social media. The last time we were officially together, not quite in this way, but in such a meeting, was five weeks ago at the State of the City Council meeting. A lot has happened in our community, country, and planet since that time. Tens of thousands of students have been sent home midsemester. Thousands of our residents have lost or risk losing jobs. Hundreds of small businesses are worried whether they will be around next year or next month. And of course, at bottom, all of us are deeply concerned about our health and the health of our families and neighbors. I appreciate the chance to provide an update this evening. As a reminder, it was less than three months ago in the city council chambers that we all took our oaths of office, at which time I noted that we were in a climate emergency. That emergency still exists with its two big challenges of first, doing our part to protect our planet from climate change, and second, making sure that all of our people have places of dignity and respect in that future. But in the interim weeks, this second emergency has arisen and has moved to the front burner, center stage. We face a public health emergency from the coronavirus, a global pandemic like none in the last 100 years, and it demands all hands on deck. This public health emergency requires our collective, immediate, serious response. Who among us is not moved by scenes, perhaps previews, in a Washington state nursing home or an Italian hospital, or in the streets of New York City, or of the world's largest democracy, India? And we know locally already, we've lost neighbors to the disease, and its impact is already dramatic and increasing. We're doing many things that we can and should be doing to respond. Emergencies are declared at local, state, national, and global levels. We are mobilizing to protect lives, not only from the direct health threats, but also to assure our safety net and our economy are protected as fully as possible. As is said, we are in a marathon, not a sprint. Really, we're in a marathon that starts with a sprint, and we're still in the sprint phase. Let me just give some key updates of key players. First, our city government itself is very focused on our role. I created a continuity of city government task force, which has met six times in two weeks, implementing new protocols to protect our employees while continuing to deliver our critical and basic government services. We are responding to the ongoing governor's orders, including the recent stay-at-home changes, closing playgrounds this morning, all city buildings to public access, adjusting to life with physical distancing, while continuing to provide our services. We are continually evaluating risks and threats to our services from the water system to public safety and implementing new protocols. Just some examples, police have changed their operations to protect officers from infection, including eliminating physical roll calls, taking reports not in person or only outside a home rather than inside. Water bills are no longer paid in person, and we are isolating our water plants and their workers. Fire stations are separating crews from each other and not allowing public entrance. We are assuring ongoing services while protecting our employees. And can I just, in front of you and all, express sincere and deep gratitude for our public workforce who show their dedication to this community every hour of every day? As your mayor and with others in the administration, we are also coordinating closely and regularly among many other community institutions. Our health system is in full swing, doing its best to prepare to meet major demands. Led by the county health department and IU Health, our health professionals have invoked their emergency plans and are assembling supplies of personal protective equipment like gowns, masks, and gloves, medical equipment, including isolation beds and ventilators, and needed personnel. They are constantly reviewing contingencies as they are seeing now, as predicted, a rapid rise in local potential and confirmed cases. All are extensively coordinating within the county, region, state, and beyond to be ready for the needed surge and to give their health advice and direction. That health guidance has led to no in-person dining, to physical distancing, and now to the stay-at-home order. Our health system is focused on protecting all of us as they can. Two new social services and economic teams are now in place to coordinate essential local support for people experiencing homelessness or food insecurity or needing childcare as an essential worker, and to identify local steps we can take to protect wages and jobs and to improve the economic recovery that we know will be needed. Among other things, both of those groups can also help align our local efforts with major federal help available. Just very briefly, the federal help we expect to be passed imminently includes direct payments to taxpayers, $1,200 to each plus $500 per child to low and moderate income households, significantly expanded and enhanced unemployment benefits, emergency loans to small businesses who retain employment and they are convertible to a grant, loans to any business in distress from the Federal Reserve, and special support for our hospitals and health systems. There may be new funds available through city and county government as well. And all of us as residents are also doing our part, and need to do our part. We each have a key part to play in addressing this health crisis. Stay at home if you can. And if you are among those who have to work, or when you go out, practice physical distancing. If you have no safe home, reach out and get the help being organized. We all should manage our household needs, for example, assembling several weeks of basic supplies in case someone gets sick. Don't go out at all if you're sick. Watch out for and help those at higher risk. Stay at home as much as you can. Let me close with just a few points and then we'll open up to questions. Let's be clear, we are in a public health emergency unknown in any of our lifetimes, demanding serious effort and attention. People are hurting now, and it will get worse before it gets better. Our federal government, and it is not time for finger pointing, but let's just say that the lack of foresight and coordinated federal efforts, for example, on testing and equipment or physical distancing, mean that local and state governments have to step up and lead. We will get through the health crisis with smart actions, but not without pain and loss. And we also have to deal with major challenges to our safety net and our economy, both of which also threaten very real damage and harm. I do want to note, our community is stepping up and standing up in many powerful, inspiring ways. We can take care of each other and take care of Bloomington. What each of us does truly matters. Physical distancing, staying at home as much as we can. Please know how many people during this stay-at-home directive are nonetheless hard at work on our behalf. Of course, government, public safety, water systems, transit, sanitation, streets, animal shelter, and all. Pharmacies, grocery stores, banks, our gas, electric, digital infrastructure, delivery drivers, cleaning services, construction workers, and many more. And our amazing healthcare workers who risk their own health to protect ours. Please show your appreciation to so many who keep our communities functioning in these challenging times. I will share regular public information presenting to you as council and other ways, so we hope no one feels out of the loop. We welcome direct inquiries as well through our office phone, through email, through the website. We are all in this challenge together, and this is a great community to be in it together with. Take care of each other. Take care of Bloomington. I'm happy to take questions from you, as you may have, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We greatly appreciate it, and I'm sure that there are many questions that members have. Before I open the floor to questions, I would like to ask, do you have other presentations from staff that you'd like to make, or are they just here to answer questions?
I think it's just me, other than the staff for presentations on the legislation tonight, but just me now, and they can help me out with questions and answers.
With that, I'm going to open the floor to questions from council members. Are there questions for the mayor on the crisis and the response? Councilmember Scambaluri?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hamilton, and thank you as well to city staff. They've done amazing work this week, and for the last couple of weeks, actually. Mayor, you talked about different kinds of federal support. You talked about direct payments. You also talked about assistance to hospitals and healthcare facilities. Can you say a little bit more about that?
I don't know a lot of the details. It's in the federal package that is pending approval. I understand they may do some things like changing Medicare reimbursement rates. There may be some direct support of public health systems and hospital systems, which they surely do need, but that's really all I know at this point, and I hope it comes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other members' questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I think my question may be one that Councilmember Rallo raised earlier, so I'm going to let him go ahead of me, if that's all right.
Councilmember Rallo, did you have a question to pose?
I did. I'm not sure it's the same one, but I think it would be helpful, perhaps not this evening, but at our next meeting or at a future meeting, to try to determine the extent of this crisis, when it will likely peak for Indiana, for our community. I know that it requires more data. That's not necessarily forthcoming right now. We don't know the number of infected in the community or in Indiana. You know, we can only estimate, but as we administer more tests, maybe that will be clear. And we could at least put sort of bounds on the infection rate and the number of caseloads and so forth, so we have an understanding of the extent of this and how long it may persist. And I don't know who would have that information. Perhaps there are modelers who are working at it at Indiana University or at the state board of health, but I think that would be very helpful for local communities, including our own.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. I'll just make a couple comments. You know, the data, of course, is very sparse because of so little testing that goes on. That will change, and as more tests are available, our numbers are surely going to rise quite dramatically in terms of people infected with, suffering from COVID-19. And, you know, the official numbers are at the state website, Health Department. Monroe County has gone from one to four in the last few days. That surely will rise. There are pending tests and others. And I think as many people expect more testing will just reveal more disease. In terms of the modeling, I will be hoping that we can collectively share some information. Not, I haven't seen it yet, but I hope there will be some modeling that will start to look at the pacing that we may see, the numbers we may see. As soon as that is available, I hope to be able to share that with all of us, and that does come out of the health system and the academic world. But I do think that's really important for us to help. But we're in this, we know, for a number of weeks, and we can kind of get previews from other communities and states and have seen the pacing that they're going through. There are states and communities that are a week ahead of us, or two weeks ahead of us, or three weeks, and we can get some sense of that, though each community is a little different.
Councilmember Rallo, does that conclude your question?
It does. I have another, but I'll...
Let's go to Councilmember Piedmont.
Yes, I was wondering if there was any coordination between healthcare providers who have access to personal protective equipment and employers, grocery stores, pharmacies, and other large employers of people who have to work, to be able to provide their store personnel with personal protective equipment. Has there been any coordination of that sort?
So there is a lot of coordination going on among many of those institutions, from various healthcare institutions to our own public safety organizations, to Indiana University, to employers and others who are communicating together on the stores of PPE, of personal protective equipment, the needs for it and such. It is a frustration, I know, not only for the healthcare workers who so desperately depend upon it, the masks, the gowns, the gloves, as well as many other people, as for example, our public safety officers and many others, and the lack of kind of integrated national planning on that. I can say that most of the, in my view, most of the kind of ultimate decisions and recommendations about what's needed and where it's needed and how to be sure to have it in the most essential places is driven by the health system, the health professionals, who are trying to assure that those gowns, masks, and gloves, as well as the beds and the ventilators, are going to be available where they're needed. I know also, there are a lot of entities working together to increase the supply of all kinds of that PPE. And in fact, things like 3D printers that the university and some private sector folks have activated to produce more ventilators by making the appropriate parts and that kind of thing. And similarly, I know a local company is trying to help figure out how to re-sanitize used masks to supplement it. So there's a lot of coordination going on that, and I expect that's a pretty dynamic situation as we go.
Could I answer that?
I had a follow-up question, if I may.
Please go ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
So I understand that healthcare providers, of course, are having these kind of discussions, but what about Kroger or CVS or Blooming Foods, you know, the other non-health professionals who are still on the job and interacting with people? Do you know if those companies have been able to get masks for their employees?
Yeah, I think, I mean, you know, we're an employer too as a city, and we think about where do we use masks and how do we use them and what numbers. And I know, I'm confident that many of those employers you mentioned and many others are looking at their needs and projections. I think what I can say about that is, given the fact that we don't have masks for everybody, I think it is the health system, it is the public health I think it is the health system, it is the public health professionals, led by our public county health department, the state system, and frankly, all the way up through the emergency management system, the national system, that is helping lead the efforts to increase the masks. I wish we had more, but it's, from my perspective, it's kind of up to the health professionals to help guide that, and I know employers are talking to them about that as well. And unfortunately, you know, this is a moving picture, but it's where we are.
Councilmember Rallo is our appointee to the continuity of city government task force. I believe he has also responded to councilmember Pibon Smith's question. Go ahead, Mr. Rallo.
Yeah, thanks. I have some relevant information. One source was, councilmember Smith this morning sent an email, which was a press release by a number of retail outlets, talking about their anticipated, their actions that they're taking to try to increase separation between cashiers and customers. And there was a press release today from Kroger, and this was forwarded to me by Dave Askins from B-Square Beacon, who was asking questions about employees of Kroger. And it talks about that, the press release includes a statement that says, "The company now plans an additional steps designed to protect the health and safety of our associates and customers. As a result, Kroger shoppers may soon see associates wearing protective masks and gloves. Personal protective equipment is in short supply across the country, and we fully support America's healthcare workers having first priority to obtain it. We're asking government officials at all levels for help securing a priority place for all grocery workers after healthcare workers to have access to protective masks and gloves. Soon Kroger will begin installing Plexiglas partitions at many cash registers to further promote physical distancing." So they are taking steps. It is clear that we have a shortage of masks, and clearly, healthcare workers take a priority. But it's something that we need to consider, and I'm glad that Kroger and other retailers in our community are stepping up to provide that social distancing that will help prevent the transmission.
Thank you, councilmember Rallo. Councilmember Smith, I saw you had a question next, or maybe a comment.
The state also issued guidelines for health workers to go into people's homes, and the state issued that about 3:30 this afternoon, which governs, you know, home and community-based services.
Can you expand upon that?
It was, if somebody appears that they have an illness, use protective gear, don't go in, have them tested. It was a general guideline, and it didn't really offer much in the way of extra protective gear, but it talked about some common sense on if somebody appears to have been infected or if, you know, and the worker themselves to stay home if indeed there's any illness that might be present and there might be an infectious. And so that's about all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you, councilmember Smith. Are there any further questions for the Mr. Mayor? You had a.
I just wanted to comment on that. Many, many people watch. I know Governor Cuomo of New York, and one of the things he said, and he was talking about ventilators, but it applies to all of this kind of equipment, is one of the really unfortunate situations is almost states and locales and institutions competing against each other to try to get the equipment that should be allocated in a much more rational way. Pricing can cause problems and availability, and so I think it is, it's great to hear this, we're continuing to seek supplies. But again, from my perspective, that's an important reason that the health system as a whole, we need to support the allocation of these resources so that it's not just all the highest bidder against the highest bidder to try to gather up a bunch of these equipment that are so important to share among so many people who need them. And anyway, I appreciate all the information, and we'll keep watching that. It's a daily-changing situation. We'll continue to seek to purchase it too, as we have from the city. But again, we need to coordinate altogether about who needs it most, who needs it now, who's going to need it 30 days from now, and that kind of thing.
Thank you. Are there further questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the mayor for his report. Thank you very much. And I do appreciate the metaphor that this is a marathon, but it's a sprint first, and we're in the sprint phase. Now, having said that, and I know it's early, but do you have any information or any knowledge of possible reimbursement of municipalities on some of the funding we may use from either state or federal sources? And I know it's early in the game, and that it may be premature.
It is early. First, I would say, we are not declining to do anything at the moment because of cost. We are taking all the steps that we think are appropriate and can take to maximize the health protection and the economy and the social safety net protection that we can. So of course, we will run into cost questions. I think the main thing I would say is, we do expect reimbursement through both the federal system and then through the state. We are very intentionally, our fire chief, Jason Moore, is very experienced in this, and we're very intentionally setting up the systems to track all of those expenses today, last week, the week before that, that relate to the emergency response, because we do think there will be significant reimbursement. We just don't know what that'll be. That's true for a lot of our private sector too. You know, they may be able to get reimbursed for payroll and other things, which is really important. And that's something that our continuity of city government is paying a lot of attention to, and it's also something the economic recovery folks are going to be paying attention to.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Rallo, I think you had a second question.
Well, it's a question I'd like to direct to someone from the health department. Was someone able to attend this evening?
I did ask Penny Cottle to attend. She said she'd be able to. I don't know if she's on the call. Is Penny Cottle?
She is. Let me activate her.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Maybe I could.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe I could close out, if you will. Certainly, if there are more questions for me, I'm happy to be around, but I, listen, I appreciate all that all of you are doing. We're going to be in this together for a little while, and I look forward to working on this with you, continuing to report to you. And just as to the agenda tonight, I just want to add my support. I appreciate your support. I hope it will be for the CBU bond re-funding. Speaking of financing, that'll save us a couple million bucks, which is very going to come in handy. And second, the potential redirection of the food and beverage tax proceeds, which there's a lot of details to be worked out, but we look forward to doing that with you and support the move forward tonight on both of those things. And I'll await if you have more questions, but thank you, and I hope to be seeing you again soon, virtually.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please stick around just a minute. I see Penny Cottle has joined the meeting. Ms. Cottle, thank you so much for joining us. She is the county health commissioner. Can you answer councilmember Rallo's question?
Certainly, I think so. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, you're coming in loud and clear.
Wonderful. I am going to ask you just to repeat the question, if you don't mind.
I haven't asked it yet.
Okay. I didn't miss it then.
Sorry about that.
My question is, if one suspects one has the virus, is testing available, and if so, where?
Well, the first thing that I would say is, testing is not available for just anybody who may want it. There is testing available through the hospital, which may use private labs or may use the state lab. Other providers may have, may be able to take specimens and send those off to private labs, but there is criteria for using those. And first and foremost, it is those who are the most vulnerable, those who are hospitalized, who have symptoms, who may need care, and we need to know if they're infected and how that will affect their treatment. Also, healthcare providers and people in long-term care facilities. So there's a set of criteria that's really used right now, and that does, quite honestly, limit testing. So testing is available. It's becoming more available, but it is still limited. So the two things that I would say first, if someone thinks that they may be ill with COVID-19, or they're just concerned, they can use IU Health's virtual app, or CDC also has what they call a self tracker, so that you can use those, and it will kind of walk you through the steps that, yes, maybe you should be tested and then try to connect you to that testing, or they may be able to guide you, this sounds more like something else, or this is what you need to do. So it kind of walks you through those assessments. I realize not everybody has access to a virtual app or the internet, so that would leave people really using the telephone to call their provider and get guidance on that. So I would be hopeful that down the road, we'll have testing available in a more complete, whoever needs it, kind of way, but I think that that will come in a stair step. I think right now, it's very focused, and it will probably, when it opens up more, it will, the guidance will just get less and less until hopefully, just if you want it, you can be tested.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. I think it really, I mean, the corollary to here is that if, because of lack of testing and because of the fact that people can be asymptomatic for a long time, but still infectious, that it is true that you should probably assume that anyone could be infected. In other words, that's why we have the self-isolation, that's why we have the social distancing, is to prevent any potential. And that's, that just is a very important step that we have to take until we can determine the extent of the, of how many of us are infected in any community at this point. Is that generally true?
Generally, yes. That's why these orders are so important. They are difficult. There is no doubt about that. They put a strain on us as individuals and a strain on our economy, but it is to get people to shelter in place so that we're not potentially spreading infection or getting infected. We do know that the incubation period can be long, but we also know that most people will develop symptoms within five days. And then recovery for most people, and this is again why we want to test the people most at risk for complications right now, with testing being limited, is that the majority of people will have mild symptoms and be able to recover at home. So we want people, if they are sick or they think they may have been exposed, and certainly follow the stay-at-home order, so that we can monitor ourselves, and if we, you know, feel like we are getting worse, that temperatures are rising, there's a real shortness of breath, you have underlying health conditions, then certainly call your doctor first. We don't want people just showing up to providers. We want them to call ahead first so that they can plan appropriately, and we're not inadvertently perhaps exposing someone without realizing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cottle, this gives me a chance to fulfill the reason why I asked you to this. Can you give us a general report beyond what you've already answered to councilmember Rallo on the state of county health during the crisis?
Sure. I'll try not to go on too long, but it's the mayor, and you pointed out, the governor has stay-at-home orders in place, and we want, we support those. It is a strategy to reduce the spread of COVID-19, and that includes social distancing. It's a health strategy to reduce disease transmission, so it is important to save lives and to keep our hospitals from being overwhelmed. Quite honestly, you talked about sort of the peak and what may happen, and part of all of this is also to kind of spread out the need for the hospital. So if we can reduce infection rates, slow them down, then that also slows down the demand on the hospitals over time. So far, and this is as of this morning, so Indiana State Department of Health has confirmed 477 cases in Indiana, and that is covering at least 51 counties, and that's all since the beginning of March. They do have a dashboard that people can look at daily. It's updated every morning with each county, how many cases they have confirmed, and unfortunately, we have had deaths in Indiana, and it will list those, and also the number of tests that's being done. So I do want to say something about testing and the dashboard. One of the reasons that we're pulling people there to monitor those numbers is because we want to keep them as solid and concrete as we can. We don't want to be counting somebody twice. We don't want to not count somebody. Private labs have to report, and they report to the state health department. So there is a little bit of a lag time. If a test is done at the state lab, then they have those results and they can add those to that count very quickly. Private lab, there's a process, and they're going to have to submit that to the state lab, and then it's got to get kind of in that queue to be added. So yes, there is a little bit of a lag time that you may see in those reported cases, but that's the best way for us to just make sure that we have a central place to follow those. At this time, I would say, we know that there is infection throughout the United States, in Indiana and in Monroe County. And so, yes, we have to act as though it is there, and wherever we go, we could encounter it. I do encourage people to try to keep up with facts versus fear, and there's lots of fear and rumors and things that go around, so we're really trying to direct people to the Center for Disease Control and the State Department of Health, who for current, up-to-date information and guidance. It's coming out rapidly. I know a couple of you already mentioned new guidance. We have staff who are looking at guidance every day and trying to keep us up to date so that we can share that with the entities that it goes to. So we are sending things out to businesses and retail food establishments, to daycares or schools, whoever it might be, really on a daily basis, as those updates come out. So for the most up-to-date guidance, look at those sites. We are posting on our website, we have links to them. We also have information on our local press releases and that kind of information. The other things, a couple new things that I would say, there are a couple new numbers that might be important for people to know with some of these orders and the different things that are going on right now. There is Indiana Essential Business and Operations list that can be found on the state website. So if you want to know if your business is among those that are considered essential or you have questions about that, that's a good resource. And there's a new hotline. It's Critical Industries Hotline, and it opened yesterday morning, and it's to help guide businesses and industries with the executive order. So does it apply to you? So I'm going to give you this number and the website, but it is also on our website, and it's at the state health department website. So the phone number is 877-820-0890, and the email is covidresponse@iedasanddavidc.in.gov. And those are two good new resources. So we do want people to check those out. We've been trying to get information, again, out to businesses to let them know. There's also some resources that are available to businesses, and we've been trying to send those out to them. We'll say, and this is kind of a response to one of the questions earlier as well, with the county emergency orders, that also allowed us to send up and apply for, hopefully to get FEMA money. So we hope that there'll be some relief from FEMA as well. So again, you talked about Chief Moore having experience with documentation. The mayor talked about that, and so it is important for people to document what they're spending on this so that when funds become available and we're doing those assessments, that we have that available. doing those assessments, that we have that available. A couple of things, I, you also asked about masks, and I will tell you that PPE is another concern. It's a concern for us, and certainly when you have a pandemic, and the need is beyond what the capacity is, you have to make some hard decisions. And certainly, right now, those healthcare providers, the people on the front line with, and the patients who may be infected are kind of first in line to get that PPE, and then long-term care facilities, and it's kind of triaged down. Even with SNS, with National Strategic Stockpile that comes from the federal government, we have very strict guidelines about where that goes and, and how it's distributed. I'm very pleased to say that there are people stepping up to say, hey, I have these masks that I'm not using, or I've had these for a while, I had them for another use, and they are being able to be distributed sometimes to our healthcare providers, but also to some of those entities that may need them and not be on those lists. So the hospitals are also tracking what they need. Locally, we track, people can report to us. So long-term care facilities, for instance, can report if, when they're getting low, and so we know when to request those from the state. But there just isn't an abundance. And with that, there are people you've probably seen making homemade masks, and while they are not approved for medical care necessarily, they can be helpful if you have nothing else. So there is guidance on that, and we are, we have people who are donating those, and we're trying to get those out to some of the places that feel like they need and want masks but may not have them available. And in those cases where it may be better to have that than to have nothing. But I do want to make a couple comments about homemade masks and just having masks and using them when you've not been used to using them or taking care of them. So we don't want mask-wearing to give people a sense of false security. They still may not protect you, they may offer you some protection. They need to be taken, put on and taken off properly, or they can, you can spread germs that way. And we want to avoid touching our face with our hands, right? We want to wash our hands well, wash them often, and avoid touching our face, which is very difficult. I'm, I myself find it very hard to do. I wear glasses, I want to touch them all the time. So I, so I understand. And even from personal experience with having to wear some of these face masks, I found that I was messing with it all the time. So if you're touching something and your hands are contaminated, and then you're touching the mask, then you may be spreading germs that way as well. So again, just can be a false sense of security. And some of the material may get warm and hold moisture. So just think about those things. When you're using masks, learn how to put them off, how to take them off properly. So that, that would be my most important thing to say about that. The other thing that I would just say is that we want to thank everyone for their efforts in this pandemic, and I do mean everybody. It has disrupted lives and livelihoods, it's difficult for everyone. And we appreciate the understanding, the support, and everyone understanding that we have a role and a responsibility in this. So the public sector has a role, and they're, we know that they're getting hit hard. The public and public service has a role, and this is a good time to talk about the public health system. You know, when we, oftentimes, people, they either think public health, they think hospital, or they think health department, but the public health system includes city and county government, it includes our businesses and our individuals and our schools, all the different partners that we talk about that we're working with. So we want to thank everybody for their efforts. I believe that we will get through this together, but we definitely need, need to be following the directives so that we can slow the spread of this infection.
Thank you, Ms. Cottle. And as if to underscore your words as you were speaking, The New York Times published an article describing the surge in cases at hospitals in New York City. As one doctor is now describing it as apocalyptic, 13 people died at one hospital in the past 24 hours in New York City from the coronavirus. To that end, I'd also like to call on Councilmember Flaherty, who is the Chair of the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, for a brief report, if he has additional things to add.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Council President Volan. I had two items to report on, as you mentioned, as Chair of the Council's Climate Action and Resilience Committee. First, I just wanted to note for the public that is watching that this committee, which is made up of myself and Councilmembers Piedmont Smith, Rallo, and Rosenberg, has been tasked by Council President Volan to take up and work on issues of community resilience in the face of the COVID-19 pandemic. In particular, we'll be working with the public and nonprofit sectors, as well as with other community-led efforts. This may include recommendations to the common council on possible legislation in time, but may also include simply highlighting and sharing information, connecting constituents and members of the public with resources and nonprofit organizations, or developing and supporting other plans to enhance the resilience of our community in light of the current public health emergency. The second item to report is regarding the mayor's proposal at the beginning of this year, that the local income tax council, of which the Bloomington Common Council is a part, consider a change to the local income tax rate. Mayor Hamilton mentioned that earlier this evening in the context of the State of the City address. In the city's case, this change was proposed in order to support a dedicated sustainability investment fund, with the idea that such a fund would prioritize equitable and just investments in the community with goals of lowering the day-to-day costs of our most vulnerable residents, while also reducing pollution in our carbon footprint, and addressing worsening climate, local climate impacts like flooding and extreme heat. The Climate Action and Resilience Committee is the council committee that took up this proposal and had begun to hold public meetings on the topic, along with reaching out to other members of the local income tax council. However, amid the current pandemic and public health crisis, we feel that it is not appropriate at this time to recommend any change to the local income tax rate. Of course, this does not mean that the global climate crisis is any less pressing, or that we are taking it any less seriously. We had already gathered a lot of useful feedback from members of the public, which serves to complement the sustainability work and community outreach and community visioning that the city has been undertaking for many years now. Indeed, as part of that ongoing work, the city is developing a climate vulnerability assessment and action plan this year. And in time, conversations on the topic of sustainability will continue with community members and our colleagues in different areas of local government. But I wanted to clarify where we stand on that. Right now, as Mayor Hamilton said earlier this evening, the current public health emergency is front and center for all of us right now, taking care of our community as we weather this pandemic together. So I just wanted to report on those two items, and that is it from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Are there any final questions or comments, Councilmember Rallo?
I had one for Ms. Cottle.
Please.
It was, I wanted to know if we had an adequate supply of PPE, particularly masks, right now, for healthcare workers and nursing staff at the hospital.
Ms. Cottle, are you still there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I was getting a little, I wasn't sure. Right now, the hospitals are, IU Health has a central place and inventory, so I, I know that they are watching it very closely so that they can disperse PPE where it needs to go. As I said, we have other places notifying us, and we kind of feed that up the, the channel to the state, so that if we need PPE as a community, that we can get that. We do have guidelines about where it goes. So what we get, and honestly, I don't expect it to necessarily be a lot, but when we get that, then we'll have to disperse it following those guidelines.
Well, could you, could you comment on, or is nursing staff safe when dealing with COVID-19 patients at, at the hospital? Do they have adequate masks at this, at this time?
As far as I know, that they do, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Smith, question?
Yes, if I, thank you, Ms. Cottle, for your report and your information. The question I wanted to ask was, do we have a guess or estimate on the number of beds that we do have in our two hospitals in this area that might be able to treat someone with COVID-19?
We do. I, I have to plead a little bit that I don't have that with me right now to, to give you. The hospitals certainly, again, they've got plans for what they can expand within their hospital setting, what, what they might be able to move among their hospitals, and I know that they're working on plans for what if we needed to expand this into other locations. So I don't have an exact number for you tonight, but yes, those numbers do exist and are being monitored.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I might just add, and thank you, Ms. Cottle, for all of that information. That's very helpful. Appreciate you being here. I, I know that the hospital, which has a little over 200 total beds, I think, and then Monroe Hospital, I don't know their count offhand, but one of the things they're doing is significantly changing their discharge procedures. You know, they've also stopped elective surgeries and other things, and they're changing their discharge procedures to try to accelerate the availability of their beds as needed, using collaborative work with other places where they can discharge patients who don't need the hospital-level coverage, or can get a different rehab place and all that. So they're, they're, they're very much trying to maximize that. But, you know, I wouldn't, we're also working very closely together, Indiana University and governments and, and the health system, to look at if we need facilities to increase beds, where would they go? I know Ivy Tech is working closely and has already offered that with the health, IU Health Hospital. We're in touch with Indiana University. There's, there's obviously a lot of empty space that's not being used right now, that could be stood up for the surge that we see in other communities, and there's a lot of planning going on for that.
Thank you. Any final questions from councilmembers? Mr. Rallo, did you have any other follow-up reporting?
Just briefly, I wanted to mention that as well as the city, continuity of city government meetings, which I have to say, I've been very impressed with the administration, the mayor and, and department heads. I think they've, they've made a lot of, lot of progress in the past weeks. And I wanted to mention that the COCG is also developing subgroups to determine our needs and actions subsequently, if this continues for months, three months, six months, a year in the future. I'm on a continuity of city government supply chain subgroup, and I just wanted to mention what that was. It's composed of Chief Moore, Chief DeKoff, Director of Utilities Vic Kelson, Director of Bloomington Transportation Lou May, and IT Director Rick Dietz. And the purpose of the group is to ensure that operations of our more critical needs, city and community, in the event of material shortages due to supply chain disruption. So things like disruption of manufacturing, or transportation disruption, economic, financial sector dislocation and things like that, that we have those types of materials regardless. So those sort of operations include things, of course, like fire and, and, and police, public safety, sanitation, water treatment, and delivery, internet, cellular communications, internal communications, public transportation, and so forth. So the focus right now is direct to ensuring that we have those reserves in place for public safety vehicles, for instance, fuel for them, fuel for backup generators in the event of a grid outage, adequate store of chemicals for water treatment, store of parts for vehicle repair, or for materials for main brakes for utilities, backup communications, and, and the, you know, PPE for first responders. So the initial, the group's initial meeting was just this past Monday, and we, which is March 23rd, we developed a list of questions to answer before our next meeting, to determine what actions we need to take to respond to possible shortages. So we've developed those questions, and I'll be sending them to the council, and we'll be getting answers in the next few days so that we can determine where we are in terms of building that kind of resiliency with, with regard to, to critical, critical needs. So that's it. That's all I have to offer on that at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. With that, we're going to close this discussion. I want to thank Commissioner Cottle and Mayor Hamilton. I, I don't think any of us envy your jobs right now. We greatly appreciate the information you've given us tonight, and we hope you will stay in touch with the council as we try to pick up where we left off within the context of the emergency. Thank you both again.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
We're going to move on now to the next item on the agenda, which is legislation for first reading. If the parliamentarian would please, wait, wait, Councilmember Sandberg, you had a-
Yes, if there could be another council report, could I please report on Jack Hopkins for just a moment?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I forgot to, yes. Before we go to first reading, again, I, I think the mayor and the Commissioner Cottle can go, but Ms. Sandberg, if you would please give us an update on the Hopkins.
Thank you. Of course, the Jack Hopkins organizing committee met when we still could meet, but we did put out a press release today. We are going to be extending the March 30th deadline to Monday, April 3rd, April 13th, rather, I'm sorry, because a lot of the social service agencies in our community that are responding to the pandemic are certainly scrambling. We want them to have every opportunity to submit a really quality grant that's going to meet their needs going forward. As we all know, the Jack Hopkins Fund has about $311,000 in order to allocate this year, and so we want to make sure that all of our nonprofits have ample time to, to get their applications in. We are going to vet those applications, obviously, in a different way than we normally have. We'll be doing that virtually and online, but we did want to let people know that we are going to strive very valiantly to stay on the schedule and make sure that we have allocations ready by the June 17th date that was already on the schedule. But we do want to let agencies know they have a little bit more time. With regard to the Jack Hopkins Committee, we have always had the opportunity to take a look at the applications and prioritize emergency services, such as food, shelter, healthcare, so that will continue to be the case. There's no need to change our criteria. But we do want to note that we will recognize pressing needs for operational and bridge funding as well. The relief or reimbursement expenses for general operating funding will be considered very carefully by the members of the committee. Again, we are striving to keep on the schedule to make sure we can get these allocations out as soon as possible. We will all be operating under these conditions. We'll all have to learn how to do this by Zoom, but the, the committee is all on board, at least by, by way of our initial meeting, to get all this organized. So we were not able to have the technical meeting for the agencies, but Steve and Lucas did prepare an excellent, I believe it's a YouTube that is posted on the Jack Hopkins site on our website, that would have gone over all the information anybody would have needed to get out of that technical assistance meeting. So again, keep your eyes on the website, keep your eye open for further notice on how the Jack Hopkins meetings will be conducted from this point on, but rest assured, we know we are, we have available a public fund that will be extremely useful in these very unusual and unsettling times. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Can you please briefly say the members of the committee, so that anyone who wants to reach out to them can?
Absolutely. We have two members of the public serving this year that are Mark Fraley and Tim Mayer. And in addition to those community members, myself as Chair, Sue Scambolari, Matt Flaherty, and Ron Smith. Did I leave anybody out? Kate?
That's everybody.
That's it. There are only four. There should, should be five. There are four council members in addition to the two community members this year.
Do what we can. Last question is, is there any chance that the committee might be able to decide sooner than mid-June if they see fit?
It's very difficult, because again, if we're going to be extending the time for the agencies, that's going to lessen the time our staff has to put together the packets, to put together the information that the committee is going to need to vet these applications. And so- And so we're going to do the best we can. We have some new staff who have never done Jack Hopkins before. We definitely want to be urgent in this. And again, getting these dollars out is going to be of the utmost importance to all of us. So we're going to do our best, but the middle part of the schedule is a little bit upper discussion at this point.
Well, on behalf of the council, I just want to say we are appreciative of your work and Godspeed. Let's go now to legislation for first reading. Madam Parliamentarian?
Yes, I move that ordinance 2005 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, say nay. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2005 in ordinance authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding Water Works revenue bonds of the city, authorizing the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana Water Works Revenue Refunding Bonds of 2020 to provide funds for such refunding and the payment of the cost thereof and addressing other matters connected therewith. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue its Water Works Revenue Refunding Bonds of 2020 in one or more series in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $42,750,000. The 2020 bonds will be issued to refund the city's currently outstanding Water Works Revenue Bonds of 2000 Series A, Water Works Revenue Bonds of 2003 Series A, Water Works Revenue Bonds of 2003 Series B, Water Works Revenue Bonds of 2011 Series A, and Water Works Revenue Bonds of 2011 Series B, all of the purpose of obtaining lower interest costs and a reduction of debt service payments on such outstanding bonds, thereby achieving significant savings for the city.
Thank you. We now move to legislation for a second reading. I think that in this case, Madam Parliamentarian, you've moved title only.
I move that ordinance 2005 be introduced and read by clerk by title only.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2005 in ordinance authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding Water Works Revenue Bonds of the city, authorizing the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana Water Works Revenue Refunding Bonds of 2020 to provide funds for such refunding and the payment of the cost thereof and addressing other matters connected therewith.
In order for this to even be considered, it requires unanimous consent to, we're, by reading it now, we're something haven't considered in a single night. If there's not unanimous consent, then we must refer to committee. If there's unanimous consent, it will take a two-thirds vote. We need a motion to that end.
I move that the council introduce and consider ordinance 2005 for adoption at the same meeting and on the same night it is introduced.
Second. Second.
This is, the motion is debatable and amendable. Again, requires unanimous consent. Are there any questions or comments on the motion to consider ordinance 2005 the same night it was introduced? Seeing?
Call a question.
I need a question called. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to consider ordinance 2005 the same meeting and the same night? This requires unanimous consent.
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Dean Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote is unanimous? Go ahead.
unanimous.
I move that ordinance 2005 be adopted.
Second.
Second.
Okay, this is, I guess I did the prior call prematurely. This debatable amendable requires two-thirds majority to pass. We will go now to presentation of ordinance 2005. Mr. Kelson, I believe you're up. Mr. Kelson, can you, are you there?
I think I am.
You seem frozen. Is his sound on, Mr. Lucas?
Yeah, I've noticed his video is a little, it's lagging a bit. I don't know if it's the number of folks at the meeting or an internet connection, but he should be, he's got audio and video enabled.
I can turn video off.
No, we can hear you now, Mr. Kelson. Go ahead. Turn it back on. He's disappeared. There he is. Mr. Kelson, please go ahead. Give it a second. Give it a second. This is the new reality we're living in, everybody. Mr. Kelson, can you hear us?
If Vic is having a lot of problems, I can jump in. He was going to introduce the team. I'd be happy to.
Mr. Kelson, hang tight. Let's hear from Mr. Underwood. Mr. Underwood, please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Coming to you from bunker Underwood over on the east side. Happy to bring some good news tonight. Want to introduce our group, of course, Director of Utilities Vic Kelson, Director of Finance with Utilities Laura Pettit, myself Jeff Underwood, Controller for the City, Bruce Donaldson with Barnes and Thornburg, who is our counsel on this, and Buzz Crone with Otto Cronin Associates, who is our financial advisors. I'm going to give you a synopsis and then turn it over to Buzz and he can add additional information for you. Essentially, this is refinancing four of utilities state revolving fund outstanding bonds into one. This will do a number of things. One, the most important is about $2.4 million in net present value savings to the utilities. And in addition to that, it helps the utilities with their ongoing debt service payments where there were going to be some balloon payments that was going to be disruptive to the payment process and their revenue stream. So one of the offshoots of the virus is that the bond markets are, have turned very favorable to municipalities. We began looking at one or two issues and due to the markets and the demand for the bonds, we're able to bump that up to four. Time is of the essence. We would like to get to market with this as quickly as possible to take advantage of these great rates. Steps to be taken would be if your approval, and we hope that you'll do that, we would move to the rating agency stage, working with standards and poor to get a rating on it. We believe it will get rated fairly high due to the nature of both the financials of the city and the utilities department and the nature of the refunding. Once we have that, then we would move quickly to market in that. So with that, I will turn it over to Buzz and he can provide some additional information and we all are here to answer questions. Thank you.
Very well put, Jeff. Yeah, can everybody hear me okay?
I'm in a loud and clear.
Well, Jeff did a very excellent job. I'll say there are four old SRF bonds that would get bundled into one tax exempt bond issue. And then the 2011 B bonds, those are the, that's the largest one. We would propose to, the taxable rates are so close to the tax exempt rates right now that we could do an advanced refunding on a taxable basis and produce about a half a million dollars more savings than what was being projected last fall. When we, I don't know if you recall, when we did the wastewater refunding, we talked about coming back with the water refunding as well. And then the rates got a little bit fuzzy there at the end of the year. But all of a sudden, the bottom dropped out about three weeks ago and we decided, well, we need to get this authorized so that we're in a position to move quickly when things are just right. And I did confirm with our placement agent today that while the market's volatile, you know, we've still got, the treasury rates are the lowest they've been. And, you know, I don't know how many years he said, but maybe almost ever. But so he felt comfortable with those, the illustration that we sent out in the last week, I think everybody probably had received that. So the restructuring a little bit to level out those payments that Jeff alluded to will actually improve the overall debt service coverage ratios by about 10%. The maximum annual debt service on the new bonds will be over half a million dollars less than the maximum debt service on the old bond. So that was sort of the second piece of the, of the goals that Jeff had set out to try to level out those, some of those balloon bond payments. So with that, I think Jeff covered everything quite well, but we'd be glad to take questions from council.
Before we do, Mr. Kelson, are you able to weigh in at all?
Technical note, he seemed to come in better when he turned off the video for that moment.
Why not turn off your video, Mr. Kelson? Go ahead.
Apologize for the poor connection.
We can hear you at least now. Go ahead. Mr. Kelson? Unfortunately, his connection is still poor. With that, what's that? We're just, Mr. Donaldson, did you have anything to say before we go to questions?
I would only say that your utility service board and Mr. Kelson was probably going to report this, did adopt a resolution recommending this to the council as well.
Thank you. With that, we go now to questions from members. Are there any questions for ordinance 2005? Councilmember Flaherty?
Sorry, actually, another technical suggestion. Wondered if Mr. Krebs wanted to weigh in. Perhaps Mr. Kelson could hang up and dial in via phone instead of connecting via his internet connection if we wanted to pursue that option. I just wanted to mention.
I'll direct Mr. Kelson and Mr. Krebs to make that happen. Thank you. Are there questions on the ordinance as presented? Councilmember Pete Mount Smith, followed by Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, I had a question about the, so there are five bonds that are being refinanced. And as Mr. Crone said, four of them will be bundled together. Those are the smaller ones. And then the 2011 Series B bond will be separate and it will be taxable. So why is that one taxable and the others are not?
Excellent question. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes. The 2011 B bonds are not callable. We can't, we can't pay them off until, I believe, 2021. And so we have to do what's called an advanced refunding, meaning we issued the bonds today at these low rates. We put the money in an escrow and then we pay them off when we can pay them off. The problem is that when the Congress did the Tax Reform Act at the end of 2017, it eliminated our ability to do what these are called advanced refundings. It eliminated our ability to do advanced refundings on a tax exempt basis. So we have to do them on a taxable basis. Fortunately, as Buzz indicated, taxable rates are very, very low as well, which means we can still do it very economically. I would just note that Congress is looking, as part of everything it's looking at right now, at restoring our ability to do advanced refundings on a tax exempt basis, but it has not done so at this point.
And?
Thank you, Councilmember, oh, go ahead.
I have a follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
Just for layperson like myself, so when you say taxable, that means the people who invest in that bond, the proceeds that they get are taxable? Is that what that means?
The interest that's paid to them would be included in their taxable income.
Right. Okay, that's what I thought.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, my question is, so I understand this is an optimal time to refinance, but I wondered if rates could fall further?
Well, that's, I wish I had a crystal ball, Councilman. The, we know that they're as low as I've ever seen in my 40-year career here. And the spread between the taxable yield and the non-taxable yield is less than 40 basis points. And I think the weighted average maturity of the four tax exempt deals is only about 3.2 years. So, and the yield on those is about one point, this is the yield to the investor I'm talking about. The yield is about 1.44%. When we throw in the yield on the taxable deal, our weighted average maturity is quite a bit longer. It's about 5.5 and a half years instead of the 3.2 years. So not quite twice as, twice as much, but you would expect a higher yield on a longer weighted average maturity. And without even factoring that in, we're within about 40 basis points of the taxable and tax exempt yields. So rates would have to, and we can't predict what the rates are going to do, you know, in a year from now or a year and a half from now. But we know that we can lock in savings of roughly, on that one particular deal, the net present value savings were, in the most recent illustration from the underwriters, about 2.1 million on the taxable. That's refinancing the tax exempt ones with a taxable one because we'd be doing an advanced refunding. And that's still, you know, we looked at this last, oh, six months ago and considered doing it with savings in the range of, you know, 1.6, 1.7 million. So obviously, we've picked up quite a bit of momentum, if you will, since that time with the rates dropping where they are right now. We could, it looks like we'd be in the $2.1 million range on just that one large taxable deal. The four tax exempts, they have a lot shorter term, so the, and the amounts, the principal amounts are smaller. But there's about a quarter of a million dollars that we can pick up by consolidating all those as well. So you're eliminating five bond issues with two and leveling out. The other part of it is leveling out those payments. We've got opportunity to level out those combined annual debt service payments, which you always look at, when you're looking at debt service coverage ratios, you're looking at the maximum annual year debt service requirement. And with this new structure that's on the table, we're reducing that by over half a million dollars, about $560,000, which is about a 10% improvement in the debt coverage ratio, which helps with our bond rating and so forth. And I guess another side benefit, you don't have to worry about arbitrage. We don't have arbitrage situation here anyway, but as a taxable bond, you don't have to worry about arbitrage yield restrictions and the IRS.
Thank you. That was a very thorough explanation. I wondered if, Mr. Underwood, do you have anything to add? No, not at this time. Okay. Thank you.
Further questions in ordinance 2005? If not, I have one. Mr. Underwood, and I guess to everyone who's presenting, is there a reason why we don't reconsider the city's entire bond portfolio for refinancing considering the historic low of interest rates?
Yes, as was alluded to by Bruce Donaldson, with the 2017 tax change.
Yes, uh, as uh was alluded to by uh Bruce Donaldson, uh, with the 2017 uh tax change, they eliminated the ability of local units of government to advance refund debt, or I can guarantee you, there would have been a lot more issues uh for you to consider tonight.
But we still have hope that they may rescind that uh prohibition.
Yes, there's been a lot of pressure on because it was a wonderful tool for municipalities uh to use to lower their debt service. Uh, and why they would take that away is, is beyond me.
Good to know. Any further questions on ordinance 2005? Councilor Pete Mount Smith.
Yeah, I just have a, a small technical question. The ordinance refers to a registrar and paying agent that may be employed, or it might, the process might be handled by our controller. Is, which method are we using?
Paying agent and registrar.
And you say that with a smile, our controller. All right.
We, we would need, we would need more staff to take care of that, that particular job. So we always farm those out.
And is that something that Bruce Donaldson's firm would handle, or is that a, a different type of consultant who would handle that?
Well, it's a part of, between Bruce and Buzz, uh, we choose uh from a, a kind of a pot of, of folks that are out there that do these services and, and we, we try to get the best deal out of them. So.
And it would be a bank?
Yes.
That has a trust department and handles these things.
Oh, I see. Okay. So it wouldn't be either of the gentlemen who are here tonight?
No.
No.
But they would maybe help you find the right bank?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'm polling my colleagues. Then we're going to go now to public comment. Mr. Lucas, this is where you come in. If there has, is there anyone who would like to address the council on ordinance 2005 who is attending via Zoom? If so, uh, you should, is the instruction to raise hands or to, yes, is to raise? Uh, there's a function in uh Zoom uh to uh raise your hands to be acknowledged. If you'd like to speak, this is your chance. We will allow three minutes per speaker.
I'll, I'll also say that sending a chat is, is also acceptable. That chat should just be visible by the meeting host. So uh, I'm looking through the, the participants now. Um, no one is immediately.
I'll open the floor for 30 seconds. So if there's anyone who would like to address the council ordinance 25, 2005, please raise your hand in Zoom or uh make a comment in chat, which will be seen by Mr. Lucas, who uh is hosting the meeting. Uh, another 15 seconds. And seeing no uh requests for public comment, we'll come back to the council for debate. Is there any final comment on ordinance 2005? I see no hands from council members, so I'll entertain a motion.
Call the question.
Second.
Okay.
Question has been called and seconded. Uh, is there any objection to the calling of the question? If not, will the clerk please call the roll? Again, this requires a two-thirds majority to pass in the evening it was introduced. Ms. Miss Bolden, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Can you repeat it for me? Thank you. Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you all.
That is a nine zero vote. The ordinance is approved unanimously. Uh, Mr. Donaldson, Mr. Crown, Mr. Underwood, uh, and Mr. Kelson, wherever you are, and Miss Haddit, thank you all.
I'm here.
For attending. Oh, he's, he's there finally. Uh, thank you all for your, your patience and we appreciate your presence here tonight.
We'd like to thank you. We'd like to thank the council for entertaining our request to do it all in one night. We know that's unusual, but uh, thank you so much.
We, we thought it was essential. Thank you. With that, we now go to the next, the next item on the agenda. Will the parliamentarian please read?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that resolution 2005 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2005, a resolution from the common council requesting the food and beverage tax advisory commission to make a recommendation for the expenditure of food and beverage tax revenues. Synopsis says as follows. This resolution is a request from the common council for the food and beverage tax advisory commission to recommend expenditures of food and beverage tax revenues toward the support of food and beverage service or tourism-related establishments and their employees within the city of Bloomington.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that resolution 2005 be adopted.
Second.
Your motion is second. Resolutions do not require two readings, so they can be adopted in the same night that they are introduced. Uh, here to present, uh, who, well, I guess I'm the one who asked for this, so maybe I should be presenting. As the, Mr. Lucas.
Well, I also want to note that we've got a few members of the administration on the meeting. Uh, Corporation Council, Philip Guthrie, uh, Controller Jeff Underwood, Director of Economic and Sustainable Development, Alex Altschuler. Uh, I think those folks are here to speak to the resolution, but an introduction, I think by you might be a good place to start.
Yes, I forgot myself. Uh, I am also the Chair of the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission, which we have affectionately begun to call FABTEC. And the FABTEC met yesterday in an emergency session to consider the county commissioner's resolution asking for endorsement of $200,000 uh from their portion of revenues from the food and beverage tax, uh, the FAB tax, you might say. And uh, the uh commissioners, the, the, the FABTEC members approved it. Uh, and that allows the commissioners to appropriate those funds. Again, for us to do something similar requires us to first pass a resolution asking the FABTEC to recommend that the council use dollars. And then we have to come back and bring forward an appropriation ordinance to appropriate those dollars. But before we can do that, we have to go to the FABTEC, and that's what this resolution is for. Um, and this is in response to a petition uh going around from members of the uh uh service industry locally, both employees and employers, asking for assistance, if not relief, from the emergency that has sprung from the COVID-19 pandemic. With that, I'd like to invite whoever from the administration would like to address this issue first to go ahead. Uh, who will, who will take it first? Mr. Crowley, Mr. Underwood?
I'll defer to uh Mr. Crowley to kickoff.
Hey.
Mr. Crowley, if you would.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're coming in loud and clear.
Okay, thanks. So thanks uh to all of you for keeping the business of government going like this. It's a very important time and, and, and actually discussion. Also, I wanted to acknowledge uh council's role relative to uh protecting and ensuring tax dollars are paid or are spent uh with fiscal responsibility. And so what I want to talk a little bit about very briefly is, is this question of the both the short-term and the long-term economic impact that is evident in Bloomington already and will likely become more acute here over the next couple of weeks, if not months. And what we're doing as a group, so the mayor on Monday asked to formalize the activities that already started in the community, having to do with um economic stabilization and planning, um, and really planning for recovery over the long term. So we uh pulled a group together that had been already meeting, but that, uh, that is now really much more focused. The core group involves uh the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, uh Dimension Mill, Inc., our department, which is the city's Department of Economic Development, and CDFI Friendly Bloomington. Um, and we pulled together and our task, our immediate task is to develop a very quick policy paper for Mayor Hamilton that lays out uh what our short-term objectives would be, and then also uh lays out our path to developing uh longer-term objectives. So as you know, there's a lot going on right now in terms of uh external stimulus, um, potential. And so we're keeping a very close eye on that. But basically, the, the task that we have as a group is as follows. Number one, to uh quantify the local economic need that has been uh caused by COVID-19. So what is the impact? And we're doing that in two ways. We're doing it from a bottoms-up perspective. So a lot of surveys and research and, um, and asking for information from uh groups in town and, and businesses and organizations in town. And that should, I should specify, includes not only businesses, but also arts organizations. And, and then, uh, and also do a top-down view of that, meaning um leveraging the um I, I DRC, which is the Business Resource Center at, at Indiana University, a national uh and very strong data analysis uh function to help us define the need um that we might uh be able to understand from the top down. So get statewide data, citywide data, and, and, and then looking at those two and see where they meet. So that's essentially the question that we're looking at right now from a data perspective is what, what do we, what do we need? And, and then there's a timing issue, which is what do we need when? Because, for example, uh anecdotally, we're understanding that the SBA loan structures might take eight to 12 weeks to hit. So, you know, that, that could be a, a relief point. Um, but before that hits, there might be a, a serious period that timings is much more important. So we're looking at, at the, the dollar amounts and the timing of when need may be uh necessary. The second thing that we're doing is looking at sources of funding. So the food and beverage tax uh is, is one, and we appreciate you considering that uh this evening. Uh, there are some others that, uh, you know, we, we have looked at. Uh, they're probably not as substantial, but they could be more um uh quick to market, even if they're in smaller increments. But we're looking across the landscape of what, what sources might be available, it, you know, and, and what kind of restrictions might exist on those right now. Most importantly, I think, is we are also looking at uh models around the country, as well as models that we can build to execute and implement any program that we might build to be able to uh deliver the support from a local perspective that we, that we feel is, would be important to deliver. So what we want to do is make sure that uh we have in place, by the time we need it, administering function that uh has expertise and capacity that can execute a program according to the service level and, and speed that we need it to execute. So we're looking at, you know, various options there. And to give you some examples, one could be, for example, an advisory group of local commercial lending um talent that we would have in town, uh, which has already uh presented itself. Uh, so that, that might be one option, and these are not mutually exclusive. We, we could also look at the CDFI industry, which is a, um, also a, a, a group that's already in place. They have existing products, um, so that, that might be another channel. So there, there are a variety. In fact, one of them might be even um a micro lending um academic tract at IU. Uh, there are a lot of Kelly School students who were supposed to be doing other projects. And, and so, you know, we're not sure exactly how that's going to play itself out, but, but, but rest assured that we are absolutely focused on making sure that whatever gets built, whatever funding is available, and it could be a, a variety of sources, that funding is put through a system that has both capacity and expertise um that can deliver it effectively. And then finally, we're looking at uh measurements. So we're looking at uh what kind of measurements do we need to put in place upfront to understand and, and, and validate uh the investment and other processes we're undertaking? And then also what kind of reporting do we, should we be uh readying ourselves for you all and to any other, to the public and, and, and any other um uh body that, that would rightfully um expect to have reporting? So we have, uh, you know, we have a lot of uh questions that are unanswered right now. Those questions, um, you know, I'm just going to throw out some examples. Uh, are we talking about uh in all cases loans? Are we talking about some combination of, of loans? And perhaps a, you know, a, uh, some much smaller percentage of grants? What does the loan structure look like? Um, you know, what are eligibility requirements that we would look for? Uh, so for example, you know, are, it, would we define uh business size? Would we um include individuals? Uh, because as you might know, there are sort of individual contractors out there that are, you know, whose business that as well. So there are just a variety of different questions that we're, we're tackling right now as part of this preliminary recommendation that we're putting together. Um, the key that I would, I would really underscore is uh, first of all, the group that is, is uh brought together to look at these questions is working very well together. It, it represents membership of all sizes of the community in terms of organizations. They represent, uh, the chamber has a lot of uh the, the retail and a lot of the uh restaurants and a lot of the um, you know, the sort of on-the-ground uh membership. And the EDC um also has membership, but they also have membership that's focused on the traded sectors. So those sectors that are making their money outside of the community and bringing it in here. Um, and so, you know, it's a group that's hard at work. Uh, again, our objective is to deliver to the mayor by tomorrow night, um, a initial uh policy document uh for review and, and then to uh go from there as we really uh figure this out. So I'll stop there. Maybe over to Jeff to add anything that he might want to add, and then certainly we're willing and able to answer any questions you might have.
Uh, nothing further, but just
Mr. Underwood?
I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Very good. Thank you. Um, with that, I'll open the floor to questions from council members. Councilor Perez, followed by Councilor Rallo.
Thank you. Um, and I believe this is for Mr. Crowley, um, or Jeff and whoever. But Mr. Crowley was talking about the FAB tax revenue, but he also said there were smaller, less sustainable revenue or sources of funding. And I was wondering, is he prepared to give us examples of what um those other revenue sources may be or funding sources could be?
Yeah, I can give you an example. And, and, you know, this is by no means guaranteed. It takes a certain uh vote from, from, from the, uh, in this case, the board. But the, uh, you know, one source of potential uh funding could be uh the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association.
Yes.
They are, um, you know, it is a, it's a semi-governmental body. So there's a, there's a, you know, a board, as you know, and, and we are, we are looking at that as a potential. It would require them to uh agree. And uh, I should note that the BUEA, uh, the Urban Enterprise Association is already very heavily involved in uh CDFI Friendly Bloomington. They were one of two very significant public and, you know, uh contributors to the investment fund there. Um, so whether we go to them directly or whether we leverage some of the uh CDFI Friendly Bloomington funding, which they in part made available, um, you know, that the, the BUEA could be, could have a role. Um, now, one thing I should note is that the BUEA has a you know, a physical boundary as defined by its, um, you know, it's, it's original charter. So, you know, we have to pay attention to that as we're thinking about a group like that to help with any kind of funding support.
Thank you. Are there other examples? I'm sorry, Mr. President.
No, please continue. No, please continue.
Yes. I was just wondering, I know that's one example, and I know it's early, but that's a good example. So thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome. Mr. Rallo.
I think this is for Mr. Underwood. I think this is an important legislation to help with bridge funding for local businesses. But is there any risk of in compromising funding support at federal or state level?
Well, then, one of the things, yes, one of the things that we've tried to be is both moving forward while at the same time being cautious. Because we there, we could expend funds and find out that those aren't eligible for reimbursement down the road. But Alex's group is very well, well, that, very well aware of that, as we are. So we're being cautious, but moving as quickly as we can to at least have programs set up to allow the federal and state packages to flow down. And obviously, you end up playing a little bit of a waiting game because, you know, the Fed's acts first, and then the state's waiting for them to see, okay, what, where can we supplement? Or do we have to administer? Then we're waiting for them and it flows down. So there's a little bit of caution there, but we want to be able to strike as soon as we have those answers.
Mr. Crowley, do you have anything to add?
Well, I would say a couple things, as as Mr. Underwood said, the, you know, we are paying very close attention to external stimulus money and and how that may or may not affect what we're doing. You know, there there are actually sort of a reverse situation where 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 SBA money could potentially pay back short-term loans that have been made. So that could, so so that that would be a case where you have external money being able to kick local money back into the pot for redeployment. So, you know, there there are functions that are going to happen both ways. I should say that, you know, if you just look at the at the kind of at a, at a particular organization, Organization A, Company A, that their, their Daisy chain should be their current traditional banking loan. That is the the first place they should turn, well, the first, actually, the first thing they should do is they should manage their expenses and really optimize their expense structure. But once they've done that, they, you know, traditional banking sector is their first line of defense for them, and they should be looking at that. Second line of defense actually is is the whole CDFI industry that are, that's really designed to 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 play on the of traditional banking. And then and then local stimulus like ours serve to back, backstop that as well. Now, we don't, and then we don't want to, we don't want to compete certainly with our local banking because I think that's the most efficient and effective way to take care of this. Having said that, you know, if if we are picking up you know, opportunities for support, we will be naturally doing so at probably a higher rate of risk than some of the more traditional bank loans that might, that might be issued. So I just want to make sure that we are going, go into this with our eyes open, that we do have a pretty high-risk likelihood. And so we are aware of that as we go and and think about ways to administer the programs.
Will you say more about that, Alex? What is, can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. Well, if you're, you know, if you have really strong financials and you have your act together, you know, chances are you've you've started already and perhaps pursued and receives even, you know, traditional banking product that can help you through whatever challenges you're going through. Those will not be available to, you know, to companies that may not have as much financial strength. Now, the SBA fits into the picture, so the SBA can have that to to fill in some of those gaps. But as you sort of get out, if you're not qualifying for any of those things that that are that are ahead of support that we might bring to bear, then by definition, you're going to, you're going to have a weaker financial posture potentially or or situation. And so, you know, the, I should, it's very much worth looking at those companies because sometimes they just don't have, you know, some of the traditional banking requirement financials, and some of those companies may very well be worth looking very closely at and helping out. But it's just doing so at a higher risk level.
If I might just throw in here briefly that my intent here was to try to expedite as quickly as possible council's consideration of a potential use of the food and beverage tax fund. So, but there is time between, if if the council adopts it tonight, this resolution that simply allows the Fab Tech to meet. We've scheduled another emergency meeting for Friday at 5:00 PM, where they'll consider this resolution that they're expecting. But at the same time, I'll also be preparing or asking to have prepared an appropriation ordinance to begin using funds that are approved by the Fab Tech. And the earliest I can imagine that coming forward is next Wednesday, April 1st. And while we could probably adopt it that night, I think it'd be better if we discussed it that night because it's going to take some time to do what Mr. Crowley has been saying. And that we have a meeting, excuse me, scheduled for April 7th, the Tuesday, where we could adopt the appropriation ordinance. So just so people have a sense of the timetable I have in mind. Mr. Crowley, I guess I would ask you briefly if you find that timetable to be too fast or too slow.
Well, I really appreciate the fact, first of all, that you're pushing this as quickly as you can. And we really feel that, you know, the faster we can get it done, the better. So I think, while it's a lot of money and it's taxpayer money, and and we have to be really disciplined about how we go about doing it. Having said that, there are, you know, the house is on fire right now. So we we do want to make sure that we we move as quickly as possible, which is why we're we're also looking at, even if it's much smaller increments, are there other funding sources that might even get us going? While we do a much more rigorous evaluative process relative to this larger sum of money that you're proposing in the resolution.
Well, I think we may learn a lot in a week. Like I said, it's a long time in politics, Mr. Underwood.
We just have to follow up as well on, many of the requirements have been waived during this emergency. But one of the things that we have to double-check on is the advertisement of an additional appropriation. The normal standard is it has to be advertised 10 days in advance of the public hearing of the appropriation ordinance. So we're trying, we're trying to follow up on that very quickly to find out. That may throw a wrench on the timing if that has not been waived.
So April 7th really is the absolute earliest we could imagine, taking final action on appropriation ordinance. Is that right?
As as long as we can get the advertisement in with the HT within 10 days. So it is published 10 days before that, yes.
Councilwoman Scambolieri, as the Chair of the Sustainable Development Committee, you've been working with the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. Do you have a question or an observation at this point?
Couple of questions primarily, and let me add my thanks as well. I've watched the Economic and Sustainable Development Department work on this for the last several days, and I am in awe of just how how much time and energy you've invested in this. So thank you. Alex, Mr. Crowley, I would be interested in your feedback. As currently written, this resolution includes the city used such funds to support food and beverage establishments, other businesses that promote tourism, and employees of such establishments and businesses within the city of Bloomington. One of the things about COVID-19 is it seems to affect a lot of businesses that don't necessarily fall in that category. So I'm thinking about barber shops or a clothing boutique that relies heavily on students being present or a small local pharmacy or something like that. What do we think about that? The language as currently written, have you gotten feedback from the BDC or the Chamber on how those segments are being impacted?
Yeah, so we've, thanks, that's a good question. We've, we've, we've discussed it and and it, I, I, we've, in fact, discussed it this afternoon. I think, I think it would be our recommendation to you, if if at all possible. And I, and and I recognize, again, the the importance of being fiscally responsible. So I'm saying this full recognition of that. And that I I think it would be our recommendation that, to the extent possible, we loosen the language on eligible funding targets. And so, you know, so the barber shop, so we're not, so we don't end up in a situation where we have a really strong administrative function. They have a very strong set of guidelines and rules that they're going to apply, which, by the way, we can report at you. And then we've kind of unintentionally written ourselves out of being able to to serve some businesses that we would have theoretically wanted to serve, but because of the way the language in the resolution has limited us upfront, we can't really justify doing that. So it would be, you know, my recommendation at this point, and it would be that of the Chamber and the BDC and DMI, that we we loosen the language up as much as possible now, within, obviously, the bounds of of the law. But we do so not so that we can be reckless with with the implementation of the program, but instead so that we can actually be as thorough and deliberate with the implementation and make that we use the monies appropriately in the marketplace. So, so I think right now, the language as it's currently written is is more restrictive than we would recommend. And and we would like to, you know, at least create, it's okay to leave that as it is perhaps, but create flexibility in a, in a, you know, maybe including or or, you know, for example, language or something that says, hey, this is the kinds of things that we want to try to do, but it doesn't include our ability, it doesn't exclude our ability to go and fund in other cases that may not be specified within the current language.
Mr. President.
I see Philippa Guthrie has, has turned on her camera. Did she have something to add? Her microphone is not. Ms. Guthrie, we can't hear you.
Just a second.
Right now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to clarify that the language needs to, it's dictated by the statute, the language of the statute for the food and beverage tax. And it it can't be overly broad because it needs to be, well, just to address upfront, I know some of you may have this question. We are working still with the State Board of Accounts on whether or not they would accept our proposal as legal. And we hope to have a response by the end of the week from them. They fully understand what we want to do, and they want to help us with our situation. They're doing this kind of thing all over the state. But we won't necessarily hear until the the end of the week. That doesn't mean that you can't proceed with this tonight and that the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission can't proceed. But I just wanted to put that out there. But the language is essentially, and I don't, I'm not going to quote it, I'm going to paraphrase it, but it has to be related to the convention center, the operation, the maintenance, the construction. So it has, and it says, or other tourism-related or economic development projects. So we can't just say any and all businesses in Bloomington that are struggling.
And then, Ms. Guthrie, continuing along that same thing, what would, what would be included then under the economic development project? Because that, to me, seems to be language that makes it a little broader than just a bed and breakfast or a restaurant.
I don't know that I can answer that question.
That's, you're right, you're right. One of the things that troubled me in this particular document, and just as a, to say upfront too, I really support the idea of making these monies available. The one where I asked paragraph that made me nervous was the common counsel concludes that the support of these enterprises. And to me, it seems like we need more than just ourselves concluding it's a good idea to do that. And so I appreciate what you've said about the State Board of Accounts. And I'm wondering if we could adjust this language such that something to the effect of having received reassurance from the State Board of Accounts that this is an acceptable use of these funds.
Can I just say that as the haste, the author of this resolution, that this is why I emphasize the appropriation ordinance, that there will need to be similar whereas clauses in the appropriation ordinance. And this is, this, the only function of this resolution is to gain permission from the Fab Tech to even consider the appropriation ordinance. So we have time to improve the language. I hear you, and I want to fix it so that it's appropriate.
Okay, that makes sense.
Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to ask about support for individual employees in the service industries rather than, I mean, in addition to supporting the business owners. Mr. Crowley, have you discussed that as well with your group?
Yeah, we're looking at that, and I think the language in the resolution allows for that as it stands right now. So, you know, there's, $2 million is a huge amount of money and for any, any of us individually. But it's, it's really not a huge amount of money when you look at the totality of the need in the community. So we're going to have to be really deliberate about how we go about doing it. We certainly are keeping an eye on individuals as employees, individuals as contractors. We have a focus on on an equity component to this to make sure that, you know, it's not just the, it's not the the shiny thing that gets all the money, but that that we're really looking across the spectrum of the equity spectrum to make sure that we're covering all parts of the community, particularly those areas that tend to be underserved. So that can be individuals. There are, there are people who are basically sole proprietors or, you know, just people doing jobs. And we need to factor that that group in. But again, what we're trying to do is avoid, you know, stepping on the toes of some of the other stimulus activities that's going on. I, in fact, have a series of questions out to the folks at DWD, the Workforce Development, having to do specifically with, in some cases, you know, is if we were to issue monies to an individual, does that somehow affect or disqualify them from other kind of stimulus? So we're watching, we want to make sure that we're not inadvertently creating a problem or we're trying to fix one. But but yes, we're looking at the question of individuals as well as organizations.
Councilor Rallo. You're on mute. There you go.
I think this is for Ms. Guthrie. So we're waiting for approval from the State Board of Accounts. Once this proceeds, would we then issue a list of those businesses targeted for assistance for their approval to make sure that we weren't in violation? How did, how would that work?
I hadn't envisioned that. I don't know what they will say. They, they were primarily concerned with whether or not the statute allowed us to do this legally. And they're, they're also concerned about how it would work. You know, who would be vetting these businesses, just the whole process? So I, I don't know.
Okay, so the the administration of this is complicated. And I guess we'll just have to go, we'll just have to proceed and and do it in there with coordination with the State Board of Accounts. Is that correct?
Well, I don't imagine they are going to want to get involved in the nuts and bolts of it. I think they're at a higher level. They just want to be assured that what we are doing is legal, and they are, they are very mindful of the fact that we are in very strange and unusual circumstances, and they want to give us some leeway. But they don't want to do something that they feel is improper under the law. And they want to make sure that it's not some fly-by-night operation where we're just throwing cash out to entities without vetting them.
Okay.
That's our sense, anyway.
All right.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scambolieri.
Thank you.
Well, wait a minute, I, are there anybody who has not already asked a question yet who wanted to ask a question? Councilwoman Smith?
I just wondered if.
Councilwoman Smith.
Thank, thank you, President Volin. I would would ask, does the ordinance restrict the return of the tax expenditure, the tax that was pulled in through the food and beverage tax to the companies or the to the companies or the businesses or the entities that have contributed to the food and beverage tax fund? Is that clear enough or not?
Yeah, I can answer that. They're actually just the collection agency for it. So that the, the tax is just remitted to the state by the restaurants and bars that had collected the tax. It actually is paid by the patrons of those businesses. So there's no nexus for them to receive it back because it's not a bottom line expense for those businesses. This is a tax that's much like sales tax. There are, there are the people that pay it and then the people that remit it. The businesses remit sales tax and they remit the food and beverage tax.
So I see. So it's not specifically tied to them?
That's correct.
Thank, thank you.
Councilor Rosenbarger.
Thanks. I just, I think I just wanted to really reiterate Councilmember Piedmont Smith's question. I, I would say I am really concerned about the direct release that we would be giving to employees. But I think also it might be difficult to call them employees. I mean, I don't know legally what we might say because a lot of people have been laid off, so they're not employees anymore. So like looking at service industry workers in some other way, I guess. But, um, and I think everyone is touching on this, but I do think it would need to be a process where, right, we don't just give money to the businesses and have them distribute that to employees because it wouldn't be equal and we wouldn't want owners deciding who gets what in that way. But I, I just, I guess, wanted to reiterate that I think it is really important that if we are allowed to do this and we're not stepping on the toes of the federal government or the state government and what people receive, it would be good for us to have a process for individuals in the service industry to apply for grants.
Is that a question?
I'm sorry. It's not, it's not a question, I guess. I mean, I've been the wrong spot.
Well, let me, let me just address it by.
Yeah.
Let me address it by saying that, again, this is just the first step in a process to resolution. And that because we need 10 days to advertise the app board, there is at least that much time that we have to, I mean, decide. And the other thing is that the app board is entirely within the hands of the city council to decide how to spend that money. And so I want to strongly encourage you and to work with the Sustainable Development Committee, who is, you know, point on this topic to, and with the, the staff here present tonight, to figure out what is the most equitable, equitable way to distribute this money and what process we might use.
Okay. I, I mean, I guess if, if I need a question in here, it would be in our resolution, we do mention employees. And like, would that legally be a problem then for people who have been laid off? Or does it, is that irrelevant at this point in time?
Ms. Guthrie, what do you think?
I don't think we need to address it tonight. I understand your concern and part of that, I think, was to express concern for employees and that perhaps one of the routes for that was to give grants or loans to the businesses to be able to keep employees on the payroll. So as far as employees who are no longer employed, that's a question. Some of them have been furloughed. It's hard to say.
Well, just to reiterate a point that Alex made is that it's very important that we work with the Department of Workforce Development so that nothing that we would do would damage the fact that they may be receiving benefits because there are repayment requirements and penalties if they get what they would consider reportable income that wasn't reported and they would actually reduce their benefits due to that. So we need to be very, very careful. We're talking about current employees and furloughed and those that have been, you know, let go permanently.
Right.
Thank you. Are there any other first round questions from members who have not yet asked a question? If not, second round, Ms. Scambaluri, I think you had another follow-up question.
I do. Thank you. Just to clarify my understanding, we're hearing a lot of questions and concerns about process and how things actually get decided and what the guiding principles are in making these awards. Mr. Crowley, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but you mentioned that you are working on a policy document, on a policy paper with the working group. Is that correct? And if I understand correctly, that's the kind of information that will come out of that. Is that right? Or is it?
Yeah, yeah, we're in a, we're in a little bit of a mad scramble to pull this together, but yes, that's exactly. So we're going to be, you know, it's, this will be an initial document that will be augmented over time. You know, there are quite, we're talking about the immediate challenge right now, but we have to keep an eye on and be forecasting out what are the long-term revenue implications to tax rolls and all that? We need to think about recovery. We need to protect resources today to be able to ensure that recovery is as strong as possible when we need it. We need to keep, you know, projects going like, you know, the investments that we're making around the city to be able to ensure that when recovery happens, we have infrastructure in place to be able to do that. So, but in the immediate, what we're trying to do literally by tomorrow, close the business, is put together some initial thoughts about, first of all, what are those principles? So principles could be, you know, speak to lab, to leverage public monies against other resources as effectively as possible, right? That could be a high-level principle that we, we kind of bake into how we, we set up products. You know, it could have principles of equity. I've talked a little bit about that. So I mean, there are a number of high-level thoughts that we would put against that. So some very specific reasons, we're doing research. What are other communities doing? You know, around the country, one of the unfortunate benefits of having some communities further along in the curve than we are is that they've, they've kind of felt it faster and they actually have gotten ahead of, of where we have had relative to some of these programs. So we have that benefit of being able to see what's happening around the country. We have, and we're bringing information like that to bear. We're looking at CDFI products that exist and that are being stood up for this particular crisis. So we can have information about that and we can learn from that. So what are the terms that they're laying out? The, you know, what are they doing in terms of waiving fees? What are they, how long is a loan? How long does the repayment, or how long does it take until repayment is necessary, things like that? So, you know, there's a lot of information. We're quickly compiling it. We will put it together in a preliminary form by close of business tomorrow. And then that document will get built on because it will, you know, we will continue to do work on it, but also we will start to pivot to longer term, both mid-range and long-term, you know, recovery efforts that we need to keep an eye on, even as we address the short-term problems.
That's very helpful and reassuring. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions at this point, I'd like to open up the floor to public comment on this resolution. Again, oh, Mr. Flaherty had a question.
Sorry. Yeah, I think one or two actually, and my apologies if these were asked in the, the brief minutes where I stepped out earlier. One is, is really confirming a couple of impressions from the resolution. One is with which, one of which is this does not commit us to spending $2 million. It says we could use this money for this purpose and wanted to confirm that that's correct. And then two, I just wanted to ask about, I know when the county commissioners passed their resolution last week, requesting that the Fabtech recommend the, the allocation of $200,000, that was an amount that was sort of unencumbered or at least not earmarked for a separate project, product, project among the portion that is in the county's accounts. That would not be the case really with the city where we have pledged, at least in some, some respect. I guess there was ordinance last year, ordinance 1909 perhaps, that we specified we would use 6.25 million for architecture fees related to the convention center and the amount of money in, in the city's accounts, I don't think is even at that level right now. So just wondering how that interacts, how that commitment, that previous ordinance that was passed by the council interacts with this resolution and potential appropriations ordinance. Again, my apologies if either of those two questions were, were asked.
Let me start with the first issue and then maybe turn it over to Jeff, if that's okay for the second one. The, to address the first one, it would be actually, not only would we, not only is it specified that we, we must spend 2 million, but we would actually recommend that we, we do it in multiple tranches. So we, we pick an amount and again, it'll have to come from what's the most burning urgent need, but that we not, you know, use up all the powder in the first, in the first go around because we need to see what the effect of that is. We need to see, you know, what kind of monies come back. But we would certainly look to potentially use the full amount over time, but to do so in a very disciplined way. So we, again, we would, we would earmark some initial portion of that and go to market with it. And, and we'll learn stuff. We're not going to get everything right the first time out. And so that we have not burned through it, that we, we reserve a portion of it for a secondary phase of, of going to market. So that's the answer that I would have for the, for the 2 million. Jeff, I don't know, can you talk to the, the earmarking?
Yes, currently we have appropriated the amount of money that we do have in the fund. So there would have to be some reallocations, as you said, Commissioner Flaherty, that the council did appropriate the majority of the funds that we had available to us. So before the appropriation ordinance, we'll be working on the accounting part of that and would have a recommendation on if we need to cut back on some of those other commitments, how much and for what project, as well as looking at additional funds that may come in. Obviously, this is just happening. It's going to be several months before we know what the impact is on food and beverage. We know that, you know, it's going to be significant at this point, but what that is, we do not know at this point. So we'll just have to wait and see.
Okay, but just a quick follow-up to confirm then, it's, it's not, it's possible to, to pass a new appropriations ordinance for $2 million. It would just require some perhaps revisiting previous appropriations the council has made.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Again, on that note, let's go to the public. If there's any member of the public who would like to speak to this issue, Mr. Lucas is standing by watching the chat list. You may also attempt to raise your hand, which is the, not via video, but via
Participants.
The raise hand function in Zoom. So we'll now open the floor to.
And give me a second. We've got our first taker.
You'll have three minutes.
Unmute and I'm going to allow folks to activate their own video. They don't have to. It's up to them. So.
All right. Good evening, all. This is Erin Predmore, the president and CEO of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And it is good to see all of your faces, even though we can't be together this evening. I just wanted to give my full support to this resolution on behalf of all of our members. Last week, calling them on the phone to check on them and I can tell they're hurting a lot. It's not just the restaurants, which we're very worried about. It is our friends who are selling us our clothes or the barbers that are cutting our hair, massage places that we usually go to, all of those places that are, our Hoosiers are hunkering down, as we know. But that means so many of our employers in the area and our employees have nothing to do. And they can't, they can't run their business without customers and people there. But thank you for considering this resolution tonight. We, again, as Alex mentioned, we're, we're working closely with, with Alex and the rest of the team on this and are excited to see what, what this money is going to be able to do. It's going to be very meaningful to our members and the rest of the community. And I'm glad and appreciate that you're considering it tonight. I know it's a, it's a hard right turn after being working so hard with the convention center for the food and beverage tax and working so hard in that direction, but I think it's necessary. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Further public comment? Please signal with, with the raised hand function or make a comment in the chat function of Zoom.
I, I received an emphatic yes from one participant. I don't take that to mean he wants to comment. But he supports the previous intent. Okay, we do have one taker. Just a second. All right. I think you should be good to go. Curtis, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you all so much. And to the council, thank you so much for bringing this resolution.
Please state your full name. Please state your full name.
Very sorry, Stephen. This is Curtis Cummings with Switch Art Brewing Company. I want to thank the council for taking the time to consider this resolution this evening. I also want to thank the council for being fiscally responsible at these funds. After all, the food and beverage tax dollars do not belong to the food and beverage operators here in Monroe County. Those dollars belong to the citizens and the tourists of this county. I say tourists on, on purpose because Bloomington is known for our food and beverage scene. We're known for our unique local and independent shops. People visit this town from all over for the culture that we create and the people that are here in the city and the small businesses that they've created. As one of those operators in this town, that took seven years to open my business, we are now faced with a very uncertain future. It was one of the most difficult things I've ever had to do in my career is laying off 24 of what I consider my family. We did not expect this when writing out our business plan. Nowhere in my business plan does it say a worldwide pandemic. The week prior to the COVID crisis, we saw a 55% reduction in total taproom revenue and over $12,000 in private event revenue canceled. We wrote the petition on change.org for our staff to show them that we're trying to do something, that we are constantly pushing forward for them to bring their jobs back and to ensure that the brewery is here when they return, when we can get through this together. And I just want to say thank you to the council for even considering this. And if there's any questions for me directly, I have no problem answering them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So any further public comment on Resolution 2005? Please raise your hand in Zoom or speak up in the chat function of Zoom. Mr. Lucas, any takers?
Not that I see. Maybe give folks just a few more moments.
Anyone want to speak on Resolution 2005 who is in Zoom? Please raise your hand in Zoom or say something on chat.
Yeah, we do have one taker. Just give me one second.
Very good.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Chris Martin. I'm the Director of Operations for Finney Hospitality. And obviously represent a pretty large number of restaurants in the downtown Bloomington area. Very appreciative of the council hearing me tonight and also having the, the discussion that you've had regarding this resolution. Really, you know, I think Curtis, Curtis speaks well for how every individual independent restaurant operator in the downtown Bloomington area feels right now. And I think it's important to understand that, you know, as Jeff Underwood mentioned a couple of times, you know, the landscape's changing quickly and we really don't know what tomorrow will bring or next week will bring. But if you walk around downtown on a regular basis these last 10 days, every day another restaurant or bar or private business was choosing to close even before the governor mandated that they had to because they couldn't stay open. And I bring 35 years of restaurant experience to the Finney team all across the United States and, and I'm very sort of intertwined in the, in the Bloomington community in a lot of different ways. And I just want to make sure you all understand that a week from now, 10 to 20% of the restaurants that existed in downtown Bloomington a month ago will not. A month from now, 50% of the restaurants that existed a month ago in downtown will not. Maybe more. So as we try to understand what to use the F and B tax on in this time of crisis, I think it's also to make sure we fully understand that the base of that tax, where people go to spend their money to generate the revenue into that tax bucket could easily significantly different in a month. So anything you can do to help. So anything you can do to help every independent operator in the downtown Bloomington area is going to make a difference. And no matter how it's used, whether it's used specifically for the owners or for their team members, it's going to make a difference. And, you know, the tourism in Bloomington, one of the big draws is obviously, you know, what you can do in downtown Bloomington, and that landscape is going to change. And I would just really appreciate, you know, that forethought as you vote tonight. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any further public comment? On Resolution 2005? Please raise your hand in Zoom or speak up in the chat function of Zoom so that Mr. Lucas can see that you're interested. Mr. Lucas, any takers?
No more takers that I can see.
Okay, we'll wait another 10, 15 seconds. If there's anyone who wants to speak to Resolution 2005, please use the raise your hand function in Zoom or use the chat function to speak. Mr. Lucas will is observing the chat. All right, then, let's come back to the council for further questions, if any, or debate. Mr. Sims.
Sorry, is this final comment?
Either or.
Either or. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say I definitely support Resolution 20-05. And I think there'll be more questions. And first of all, thank everyone in all the discussions this evening because they brought up a lot of issues and questions that I think we've all been thinking. And I think there'll be more developed the time we get to the appropriations ordinance phase. And I think that'll give, in particularly, folks like Mr. Crowley and Mr. Underwood, a chance to flesh out and Ms. Guthrie, a chance to flesh out some of the questions that we've had this evening. I had some questions or concerns initially about eligibility. Businesses other than those that are considered a food and beverage entities. Arts organizations were mentioned earlier. Not that we didn't think about those, but I think it's very important. How is the entire downtown, who is basically built on tourism? Or it's sustained a lot by tourism? How would their eligibility be considered? These are questions that can't be answered tonight, but I'm looking forward to them being answered later. I also want to thank Mr. Crowley again and the group that he's working with. I think these are some very important issues that they're working on. And how do you quantify the local economic need? What are the total sources of funding? How are these models that they're seeing across the country being used? And particularly in those areas, but how are they been aiding us in developing our own local model? And of most important, I think, is measurements. How will we measure this need and then measure its effectiveness? So I am looking forward to more discussion as we move toward the app or, I'm sorry, appropriation ordinance phase. And I just want to thank some of the community members for some of their comments as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, I think we're finding ourselves in very somber times as we think about the whole culture of Bloomington and what makes it so unique and special. Our independent businesses, restaurants, the arts, and so I wholeheartedly support what we're doing tonight, which I understand is step one. We have many more questions. We have many more things to get solidified before the next phase. That's, I do want to also give my thanks and gratitude to the internal team, the whole CO, CG, the continuation of city government team and the subcommittee that's working very hard on the mechanics. That cannot be understated. City council cannot do this by ourselves without the day-to-day staff who are very diligently working on the details, not the least of which are legal staff who are working with the legal decision makers about what we can and cannot do going forward. So we're all very fluid in these times. We need to be very flexible in these times. But with regard to the empathy that we have for our restaurants and our bars and our entertainment that just put Bloomington on the map. And to think that any of that is being jeopardized in these really difficult times when people can't get out. People cannot, you know, participate in all of these businesses. They're going to need the support to keep their doors open if we have any hope of bringing Bloomington back to its glory once we are able to do so. So this is absolutely necessary. I'm all for it. I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Further comment from members? Councilmember Smith?
I certainly would like to voice my support for this resolution. It's an incredibly important and step towards trying to help out people that are really suffering in the community. So thanks to Alex Crowley and Jeff and everybody, Philip, Ms. Guthrie, and the internal team as well. Thank you very much. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Further debate from members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you. I am very grateful for the report from Mr. Crowley tonight. It really reassures me that experts in the field, clear-headed, long-term-thinking people are on the case and are looking at the economic consequences on our community of this epidemic. And I am very pleased to hear that. I'm looking forward to hopefully receiving a copy of the white paper that they're preparing for tomorrow evening. I think that will help us in our deliberations on the appropriation ordinance, which would come after, assuming we pass the resolution tonight and the FabTAC passes their recommendation along to us next week or on Friday. So I'm very grateful to the team that the city has assembled to plan for the economic times, the uncertain and dire economic times that are ahead of us. And I look forward to their expert guidance as we decide what details to put into the appropriation ordinance and then how to administer the funds so that they are used the most efficiently and most effectively to help businesses and employees survive this economic downturn. So I'm very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
I want to echo everything that's been said. I expect this crisis to go on for unfortunately quite a long time. So I am very supportive of this, but I consider it a first round attempt at bridge funding for businesses. We'll have to revisit this again. I think the administration of this will be complicated. I think it will be the eligibility and so forth in order to comply with the State Board of Accounts rules. So I guess we, this is a good first round. I think that this will we'll have to recalibrate as we proceed on the basis of evaluating the effectiveness. And I would like to thank the administration, ESD, the Controller, Ms. Guthrie, and Mayor Hamilton's support for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Further debate, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, just a few comments first. Echo those saying that I very much appreciate the diligence and thoroughness with which city staff, controller, Mr. Crowley, Ms. Guthrie have all looked at the details of this and the allowance of it and how exactly we fit in the contours of the state statute and the guidance from the State Board of Accounts. And I know we have some more guidance forthcoming there. I'll mention, and it's been mentioned by a few others, that I've heard from a number of constituents, including local restaurant owners downtown, as well as servers and bartenders that are a little concerned about this going only to business owners as opposed to the service workers and staff and employees, or even in some cases, former employees. So I think that's a really important piece. I know it's on the, you know, the mind of the folks working on this, including council members and members of the Sustainable Development Committee. It's just something I wanted to do, spotlight and say that we need to all be keeping in mind as we look at what types of policy guidance we would like to see in the appropriations ordinance and in other documents related to any expenditures of these tax revenues. And finally, just thank you to the chamber, the local business owners, Curtis Cummings certainly, who got this petition started and others who've been working on this. For those watching tonight or later, I would suggest that you, if you have specific ideas related to any of this, concerns, questions, please reach out to your council members and share those with us so we can make sure that we're getting good input from constituents, from the public, from business owners as to, you know, what their needs are and how we can best craft a policy that will serve the greater good of the Bloomington community. So that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further debate from council members? Councilmember Scambaluri?
Thank you. Again, I want to express my thanks certainly to Alex and his team. But particularly too, to those teams that have kind of come together on the fly to respond to these kinds of questions. The Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, Dimension Milk Inc., CDFI from Bloomington, and many others have really, I feel better, I sleep better knowing that you're working on this, I guess is the way to say it. But I just wanted to say thank you. So, and I'll be supporting you.
Thank you. Seeing no other council members who wish to speak, I want to say a couple of things. And I'm kind of going to kind of combine the last part of the meeting, the council schedule, with my comment. So because the governor has asked for only essential business to be done in order to prevent some business that would almost have to be done. Otherwise, we're going to be canceling the regular session of April 1st. But I will be immediately asking after this vote, because I assume it's going to pass, for a special session to be called for April 1st. In the normal time, we would have had a regular session just to consider the app board that, the appropriation ordinance that is the logical successor to this resolution. And this is where there will be a lot of questions and debate about how we should structure the use of this money. And it's going to be very important. And I think in particular, Mr. Crowley, this message is to you about the bankers who have stepped forward to assist. They're going to be an essential part of anything we do. We need help to figure out how to structure the loan or the bridge loans or whatever we're going to do to mitigate the impact of this on the local private sector. And again, it requires a 10-day period between the advertising of it and the approval of an appropriation ordinance. So it seems to me that the earliest we could approve the ordinance would happen to be the time of the next meeting we had scheduled, which was an unusual day. It was a Tuesday, April 7th meeting. Whether it's Tuesday or Wednesday at this point, I feel like that's going to be the right amount of time between getting the details right of this program, but not waiting too long to invoke the program. So as soon as this vote is done, I'm going to move to, to ask that we move to cancel the regular session and to call a special session. It seems like rearranging deck chairs, but it really isn't. It's an important step we need to take. I want to thank everyone for considering this on such a short notice. The resolution was prepared maybe 48 hours ago. And it was in anticipation of and response to the good first step that the county has taken to address the issue with what resources we have at hand. The one thing that I have thought all along about this use of the fund is that at least we've established in the first two years of the existence of the FabTax that there is a substantial, A, there's a substantial restaurant sector in Bloomington. At $3.5 million last year, that's a $350 million a year gross revenue food and beverage sector. The second thing is that if we can get our industry back to where it was, we can generate the revenue to build a convention center. We may have to put more money into the bond than we were planning to spend instead of just spending cash. So we may have to finance it, but that's still a far cheaper price to pay than to lose the substantial part of our local economy. And I don't think that the entirety of the sector is in jeopardy. But, I mean, if we don't move within a month, I agree that, you know, we're at risk of losing half the restaurant sector. It's not like other communities don't have similar problems, but it's a particular focus of our community. We rely on it more and we, you know, we value it. So I will also say that I am concerned about, at the same time that I'm concerned about the businesses who have been forced to lay off staff. I'm concerned about the staff that laid off. And I don't know what the answer is right now, whether money should go directly to people who've been laid off, how to make that work. I'm open to all suggestions. And I want to urge my colleagues to consider that whatever gets put into the packet Friday for that appropriation ordinance is going to be in need of work. So don't hesitate to write amendments. We're not going to be able to cobble together a plan for how to use this money in two days. It's going to take that entire period. And so we may be looking at amendments on April 1st. We may be looking at amendments on April 7th or 8th. But it's going to need everyone's help to craft this language and to the resulting program that Mr. Crowley and others will be executing. So I'm asking you for your help here because I can't, none of, no one person can write this particular ordinance alone. And considering that everything else has to go on the back burner, this is essential business that I need everybody's focus on. With that, if there's no other comment.
Hold a question.
Second.
Give a call in a second. Will the clerk please call the role in Resolution 2005?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes 9-0. Thank you all. With that, we're going to go to council's schedule. I need a motion to cancel the regular session for next week.
Motion to cancel.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. Need a motion for a special session at the same time.
I move that we hold a special session next Wednesday, April 1st, starting at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. We will have a special session instead of a regular session next week at 6:30 and we will likely be taking up an appropriation ordinance in response to this. The FabTax again meets 5:30, 5 o'clock on Friday to consider the resolution we've just passed. We are, of course, going to be meeting virtually by Zoom as we did Tuesday and as those of us have done here tonight. and as those of us have done here tonight. Um, Mr. Sherman, do we have any other business?
No, thank you.
All right. With that, I want to thank everyone for uh, being patient through this experiment. Uh, Zoom seemed to work pretty well. If you have any comments about how this went tonight, please feel free to email any of us on the city council. If there's no objection, uh, uh, by the way, also uh, I've, I've seen you all literally in a new light tonight and uh, I, I think that this is a good way of meeting and I wonder if we can't integrate it into our processes when we go back to normal. Mr. Sims.
Thank you. I don't want to screw up the process, but I think um, one thing that we failed to mention this evening, I want to give do thanks. And that's to um, Clerk Bowden for her part in facilitating um, Zoom and this virtual meeting.
Here, here. I also want to say thanks to Andrew Krebs and the mayor's office and to Stephen Lucas, who has spent all day coordinating this very unusual meeting. And it does, it has proven to me that we can successfully meet online and uh, that Zoom is a pretty good tool for it. So with that, if there are no other comments.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, everyone. We'll see you on April 1st.
Good night. Thank you.
Aye.